Well, good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 12th, 2014. We'll call the session to order. Note that all commissioners are present with the exception of Sam, who is excused tonight. We will offer any opportunity for folks that are here to provide input or comment to the Planning Commissioners or the Planning Commission on subjects not related to what's on the agenda. Seeing none there, we will move forward with the approval of the minutes. I will take a motion for approval of the minutes from December 4th, 2013.
I make a motion we approve the minutes for December 4th, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Note that it passes three commissioners voting four and three abstaining because they weren't present at the meeting. Moving forward to December 18th, 2013, look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from December 18th, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Note that that passes with five commissioners voting four and one abstention, as I was not present that evening. And with that, it looks like we will continue the public hearing on the 2015 Periodic Plan and Code update, this evening reviewing the initial review of the community services element and the second review of the natural environment element and implementing critical areas regulations. And with that, Mr. Bill Weislogel, thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter, and good evening, commissioners. This is the initial review of the community services element of the comprehensive plan. I'm going to skip over these preliminaries which are intended to be used if we have new folks in the audience. I conferred with the one citizen we have in the audience, and he assured me that I need not go over that background. So moving right on to the community services element, this is not a required element under the Growth Management Act. It's not listed as an optional element under GMA, and there are no goals in the GMA that address community services. So, one might ask, why is it even in the plan? And the reason it is goes back to the enthusiasm that surrounded the plan back in 1994, as I've told you before. This element was included in that original plan because there was a desire back then to make the plan inclusive of every single aspect of community life, and human services or community services being one of those aspects. Also, at the time, the city owned a building that was occupied by a human services agency. It was called the Multi-Service Center. It used to be located immediately north of the Dawson Building where the Community Development and Public Works Departments are now. The last occupant of that building was Hope Link. The building was vacated, then it was demolished around 2010. Also, back in the 90s, there might have been a little more impetus to have policies guiding the city's human services funding efforts, because those kinds of funding decisions were on an ad hoc basis back then. But in the 2000s, the city established a consistent process for evaluating requests by human services agencies for funding, and that has been incorporated into the budget process. And it involves the Council Human Services Committee reviewing requests and then making a recommendation to the full council. I'd like to point out that Peter's wife, Terri, was instrumental in implementing this much more systematic and fair and comprehensive way of evaluating human services agency So the staff proposal is to eliminate the community services element. Again, it's not required by GMA. There aren't any goals in GMA that concern community services. As staff informed the Planning Commission at the outset of this process, staff resources are more appropriately assigned to other higher priority tasks, and there are many of those. We don't have the resources to maintain every part of the comprehensive plan, and certainly not those that are not required by GMA. Another point for elimination of the community services element is that the permitting of construction of community services facilities really is no different than what we do for any other facility. It's not as if there are special policies that need to be applied for human services facilities. And finally, as I just said earlier, we have a fair and equitable human services funding process in place, and it's working very well. So the proposal is to eliminate the element, but there is an exception, and the exception has to do with fitness-related policies and actions, and that's because there is a recent amendment to the Growth Management Act that requires the inclusion in the land use element of planning approaches that increase physical activity. So in order to comply with the GMA, staff is proposing to relocate two policies and two implementing actions from the community services element to the land use element. Policies are HSP 14 and P 15, and actions are HSA 8 and A 9. So that brings us to the staff recommendation. We recommend that you accept public testimony, that you deliberate, and that you preliminarily approve the deletion of the community services element as it's been proposed to you, or with any revisions that you might request tonight. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Bill. Any clarifying questions or any points of clarification on Mr. Weislogel's presentation? And if we can keep it at that, and then we'll take, if there's an opportunity to offer any public testimony, we can hear that before we deliberate.
Just one quick question on the presentation. Human services funding, Bill? I noted that as you were speaking. Tell me a little bit more about that.
The city budgets a certain amount of money for human services funding. We receive requests from a variety of agencies that amount to typically more money than we can afford to pay out. So we have a system whereby staff takes in these requests and brings them to a council, Human Services Committee. That committee reviews the requests, makes recommendations to the full council. The full council then considers those, and it gets folded into the biennial budget process.
Okay. So even though we've sold this building, we still have a part of the city's budget that does go to human services, and you're not proposing that that change?
No.
As a result of this?
No. We're not proposing that that change. Actually, what we're saying is that it's a good, fair, and equitable system that's in place and doesn't need to be driven by any policies.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that, we'll offer the opportunity for anybody in the audience that would like to provide testimony to the Planning Commission on this matter. Seeing none, we'll open it up for comment and deliberation from commissioners. Bill, I just have two things that I'd like to quickly ask and make sure that we're not -- well, just to get a better understanding of mainly how this had been used or how it had ever been tapped in the past. What I'm trying to figure out is, here's an element of the plan that we invested in, we had around, and can you give me a sense of how many times it was actually used or gone to or became an impetus for an action or a decision by council?
Well, you could probably count them on one hand or less. I honestly can't recall an instance since 1994 that we cited a community services element policy or action to direct something that the city did.
Okay.
It was, you know, as I explained in that very initial presentation, there was a tremendous amount of optimism and enthusiasm and excitement about the plan in the very early days of the Growth Management Act, to the point where we went, the city of Bothell, went well beyond the requirements of the GMA. In retrospect, it was probably naive. You know, we ended up not really applying, as I said, any of the policies in this particular element. And so it felt good to have it, but it didn't really have a practical application. Although it could be, I guess arguably, it could have provided the impetus for the human services funding process we have now, which is a good thing.
And that kind of leads to my second point, that we do have a, what I guess would be a non-policy process in place. It won't be in the comprehensive plan. What are we doing to ensure that that remains as something that continues to protect the opportunities for the city to participate in community services moving forward? If we are eliminating the element from the comprehensive plan, for some reason, a policy that is being implemented deteriorates, is put on the shelf because of budgetary concerns. I guess I'm looking for, trying to understand what the protection is, that the mindset, the goal, the overall, you know, intent of the vision, while I agree it doesn't belong necessarily anymore, and the comprehensive plan has still got some certainty that it's going to continue forward, and those that benefit from that in the community aren't going to be left aside because a non-formal policy is left in place.
I think that's a really good question. It's important to streamline the plan for the reasons we mentioned before, limited staff resources, a lot of other higher priority issues. I don't think it's a bad idea to have a policy somewhere in the plan that, as you say, protects the interests of these kinds of agencies. So if you would, allow me to try to find a place in one of the other elements where that might be appropriate. I'd like to pursue that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any further comment or discussion, deliberation on the motion to eliminate, I guess, the community services element of the comp plan? Yeah, Patrick?
Just one quick note. On the language that we are leaving in, was there any thought of adding some language towards our Parks and Rec Department as far as like our active promotion of health and well-being rather than just the promotion?
Yes. I would say that these, I think the wording I used, these policies or some variation thereof will be carried over to land use. I don't think the policies as written here in the community services element are the be-all and the end-all of physical activity policies that the GMA is requesting. So, yeah, there's certainly the ability to either expand on these policies or create new policies that address Parks and Rec, as you've said. And we do have a Parks and Rec element that'll be coming to you next week. That'll go into that area in a whole lot more detail.
Go ahead.
I do have a few comments and questions, but before I go there, maybe I should, full disclosure, state that I'm on the executive leadership committee for Hope Link. And Hope Link is one of the agencies mentioned specifically in this element. So perhaps, I guess I would ask the question, should I recuse myself from this discussion before I go any further because of that?
No, you need not do that. This is a legislative matter, and so you don't have to worry about recusing yourself.
Okay. Thank you. I recognize that the Growth Management Act does not require a community services element, but I do believe our strategic plan is more than just a response to the Growth Management And I recognize that how community services are defined changes over time. So where perhaps years before there was a bricks and mortar element with a building that that may have changed now, and that there may be some tactics that we play that are, we would propose that would be not bricks and mortar oriented, but there might be other ways that our city participates in this. And therefore, I just want to initially state, I'm not comfortable with completely eliminating this from our strategic plan. And I think it has to do with how Bothell defines itself as a community, and so I applaud, perhaps the motives were naive 15, 20 years ago, perhaps not. And I recognize that those things change. I also recognize that planning resources have changed as well. But I'd like to see this remain in the strategic plan, but perhaps scaled down and modified based upon current realities. And I do have some ideas about how we could do that, but I can save that for later.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So we, I guess we will continue this, take a motion to continue the public hearing on the review of the community services element until April?
Well, let's see. We could continue it to March 26th. Yeah.
So that would be one option. The other option would be to vote on it this evening?
Yes.
Do I hear any thoughts from the commissioners on whether to continue or whether to take an action this evening?
As I read the information that's been handed out to us, it does state that the community service element, there are aspects that are worth retaining, and that the goal is to just simply put them into other sections. So from my perspective, I'm very comfortable voting on it tonight.
If I could just respond, the elements that they're proposing retaining pertain to land use and specifically around having some facilities that would promote fitness.
Correct.
And I even see that as related to healthcare, the healthcare of our citizens, to provide walking, biking options. And so I'm proposing that I understand that, and keeping those elements and moving them perhaps into land use makes sense. But from a community services standpoint specifically, a couple of ideas, if I could just briefly mention them. So one idea I had was is that our, these are city employees, public safety, but actually every city employee, whether they're answering the phone, in some way in contact with our citizens comes, they come in contact with our citizens often in times of crisis or in times of need. And so a training element for them to know when and where the resources are and when to avail of themselves, I think, is something that we want to provide to our city employees. So a training element, I'd like to see included. Secondly, if we've eliminated a bricks and mortar element, but we do have the city's website, and there may be other online tools that the city could provide through that way that our citizens can go to when they are in crisis or in need. And again, it could serve that facilitating effort. And I'm not suggesting the city gets into the business itself of delivering services, but I am saying the city could facilitate identifying resources, whether they're taxpayer-funded or privately funded. And so that's, those are a couple of tactics that could be included in this community services element. Or perhaps there's another place in the strategic plan that we include it, but I'm, that's what I, when I'm saying I'm not comfortable with us completely eliminating it, I'd like to see us keep that in our strategic plan.
Well, if I could respond to that and maybe articulate in a little more detail the issues for staff on this. One is maintaining the their profile section, that part of each of these elements that describes the current state of affairs for that particular element, particularly in the area of community service. It's really hard to keep that current, and especially when we're only required to update these things every eight years. Human services agencies, they merge, they split up, they establish different missions, they come into the community, they leave the community. As staff informed you at the very beginning, it hurts the credibility of the plan for it to seem stale and out of date. So that's one concern, just the profile section of this element. The other concern is we'd like the policies, goals, policies, and actions to be meaningful, not just to sound good, you know, not just to make you feel good when you read them, but to actually have some application to help truly guide city decisions. There are some policies and actions in here concerning things that the city doesn't really touch, you know, that's not really in our scope of authority. So those kinds of things, again, they may sound good, but they don't further the mission of the city. I hear what you're saying. I think I was the one who originally wrote this back in the early 90s, and had this been 10 years ago, I probably would have fallen on my sword, you know, not wanting to give it up. But we've been forced to streamline the plan to something that is, that more closely complies with the GMA and doesn't have a lot of extra things in it. So maybe the thing to do is to, unless you have specific direction, is to enable me to think about this some and figure out where else in the plan some of these policies and actions might go appropriately. I would need direction from you as to help me winnow those down. I don't think you want every one of these to be kept, but if you could narrow them down to not just a select few, but the ones you think are really important and that the city really needs to direct its actions, that would be useful.
So I appreciate your point, Bill, and don't want to have this plan larger than it needs to be. And so if eliminating the element is a way to do that, and yet keeping some of those specific tactics in place in other elements that keep with the character of our city, I'm open to that. And I've given you a couple of options of my own, training and on the city's website as potential tactics perhaps that could be placed in other elements. And I'd be happy to go through each of the goals and actions and policies that are in the current language and to see if there are others that I suggest that we retain. So I'd be happy to do that.
So if I could offer for the commission, what I think I've heard, and feel free to correct me if you've heard different. It sounds to me like we need to be, or being better informed on the city's current program outside the context of the comprehensive plan would be helpful for some of the commissioners to be able to arrive at a decision in their mind. Comment that I made earlier about how to protect the ability for the city to provide services outside the context of having a community services element in the comp plan. And then also the opportunity for commissioners to provide some specific input back to you, Bill, that you can digest and bring back to us. If those three things are consistent with the thoughts of the rest of the commissioners, I think I would take a motion to continue this public hearing on the proposed code amendments and initial review of the community services element. And I believe you said the 26th of March may work?
Yes.
Great. So is there a motion to continue to March 26th?
Move to continue the public hearing for the community services element of the periodic, 2015 periodic plan and code update. Bill?
I'm sorry. I just remembered, I have a Snoamish County tomorrow, Steering Committee meeting on March 26th. So we were going to give, let's still give them a break on April 2nd. If you'd continue to April 9th, that'd be great. Sorry I didn't remember that.
That's okay. Appreciate you catching it now.
Yep. So a motion to continue the public hearing on the community services element of the 2015 periodic plan and code update with an opportunity for commissioners to provide specific feedback to Bill Weislogel, continue this to April 9th.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Note that it passes unanimously with those present this evening. Thank you very much, Bill.
Good evening, commission members and members of the audience. This is the second Planning Commission public hearing on the natural environment element and the curricular regulations. The Planning Commission had this initial discussion on February the 26th. Now, the natural environment element is one of those optional elements that we actually is not actually required by the Growth Management Act, but the purpose is fairly clear. There is a growth management goal that identifies to protect the environment and enhance the state's high quality of life, including air and water quality and the availability of water. Now, the natural environment element contains a number of policies regarding features such as curricular areas, which are wetland streams and wildlife habitat, curricular for recharge areas, and frequently flooded areas, as well as a bunch of provisions on forested hillsides, open space, air quality, and what would be new for 2015 would be climate change and conservation of resources regarding greenhouse gas emissions. Now, at its initial public hearing regarding this topic, the Planning Commission identified a number of revisions and clarifications that would be implemented for this second round of discussion. And of course, one was to clarify and simplify the new goal, NEG 4. Basically, it was kind of a little bit confusing, so we decided to clarify that and make it much simpler. Provide some additional information regarding climate change and greenhouse gas emission policies as promulgated by the King and Snoamish County countywide planning policies. And actually, within the document itself, I've got all of their policies regarding climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. And maybe also the commission asked me to identify some elements which some of those policies may be applied to. And as we identified at the initial hearing, there were some features, particularly, you know, transit, mass transit, multimodal means, non-motorized forms of transport, that were effective in other areas such as the land use and the transportation element, as well as some provisions that may be appropriate within urban design. The commission also asked that we include other greenhouse gas emission features like carbon dioxide. We identified that as, carbon dioxide, I'm sorry, as we identified that as something that was important to include in here, as well as identify the standard that would be met. And essentially, what you have in the document is that I have replicated the King County countywide planning policy standard, which was to by 2050, 15, 50% of the greenhouse gas emissions that we had in 1990. And of course, the commission also identified the need to encourage mass transit, non-motorized forms of transportation, include some green planting, that was an item that the commission identified, as well as to simplify and maybe combine some of these policies. We had a lot of individual policies, and it was pretty simple to combine those policies into one and just have bullet points. That actually worked pretty well. That actually worked pretty well. Now, one of the features we did not discuss at the initial hearing was a proposal by staff to remove the figure called NE6. It's the natural environment as composite critical areas regulations. What this map does is it basically takes the entire city and shows where potential geologically, potential liquefaction, and all those other features that are identified as critical areas are located. Unfortunately, what this does is it kind of conveys a false positive here, because it identifies a large area of the city, in fact, the majority of the city, as covered with some form of critical area. And that really was not the intent, because that's actually not what's actually on the ground itself. What this map does is by identifying possible geologically and liquefaction areas, and it covers a much greater area of the city, it looks like it's about 80% of the city, when indeed, in fact, it's actually about 20% of the city is covered by these areas. So staff has recommended we remove this particular figure just because it's so confusing. Finally, the critical area regulations are a very central component of the natural environment element, and the Planning Commission at its initial meeting identified no changes to the initial document that you had. However, I went ahead and included it in this packet just in case there might be somebody who might have a comment on that particular regulation, which is Bothell Municipal Code, Chapter 1404, and also in case the Planning Commission looked at something and said, oh, well, maybe we want to talk about this as well. So that concludes my presentation. Be more than happy to talk about questions and concepts and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Again, we're at this stage of the meeting looking for any questions regarding the presentation or points of clarification before we ask for public testimony. At this time, oh.
Oh, pardon, just to clarify, are we commenting on specifically that or the?
Specifically on the presentation at this time. We'll get to the details of the work. So if there was anything that would help in our deliberations later.
Yeah, well, I think there were a few things that had come up at the last meeting that some of the suggestions from the Planning Commission that weren't captured on that list. So I can bring those up now, or I can bring them up at the appropriate section.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. So in terms of lists of some of the ideas that we could do, one of the things that came up last time was promoting more local businesses, because, for example, I have a 25-mile commute. If I could have a job at North Creek and have a three-mile commute, that would be a wonderful reduction in miles and CO2 emissions, and a more effective reduction than a lot of other options I have. So I just don't want us to be overlooking the environmental value of having local business opportunities.
Good. Thank you. Any other points of clarification?
Yeah, Bruce, you'd mentioned that the natural environment element is an optional section of the?
Actually, it's actually not even an optional. It's actually not even identified as a mandated element of the company's plan, although it did have some provisions. No, that was parts in recreation. I'm sorry.
I think the GMA requires critical areas regulations.
Oh, yes.
Which need to be driven by policies. I think the GMA intended that those policies would be in the land use element rather than in a separate element. So it's not as if the GMA was saying, don't have natural environment policies. They didn't specifically say where they should be, but reading between the lines of the GMA, I think they thought they would end up in the land use element. We elected to break those out and make them a separate element.
So are we required to meet the King County policies and the Snohomish County policies?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So thank you. At this time, we'll again open the floor for any public testimony or discussion with the Planning Commission regarding the natural environment element of the comp plan and the proposed changes. Seeing none, we'll now turn back to the commissioners and open the discussion on the proposal in front of us. Mike, you want to start, or Patrick, you want to start?
Yeah, I just, my only comment is I appreciate staff bringing us the deletion of the map. I found that to be alarming, and I thought that any insurance company or anybody would look at any building going into Bothell would be concerned about having a map in front of them that looks like there's a critical area covering the whole city. So just for clarification, I'm glad they removed that. So, thanks.
Patrick?
Same.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, so there are a few comments that I had there. One was over terminology, when we refer to climate change, reduction strategies and things like that. My concern there is I don't really know what that means. We've definitely reiterated the importance of being good stewards of the environment, and I think our vision document from a few weeks ago captured that really well. Carbon reductions, I understand, greenhouse gas reductions, I mean, I know what that means, but when the term climate change reduction strategies is very ambiguous. If that means greenhouse gas reductions, and, you know, we could just say that, or if it means something else, can we make that a little more specific?
Well, unfortunately, part of the issue is that that is a very broad category, because as we've identified, certainly involves greenhouse gas emission reductions, but also involves some of those other items we've talked about, like having businesses and homes close together, encouraging people to use, you know, mass transit and all those kinds. So it's a wide range of items. And if you look at those countywide planning policies from Snohomish County and King County, it covers just about every gamut that you can think of in that particular element. So it, yeah, it's really a wide range item.
Well, even in those cases, I feel like we can still make it a little more specific. A lot of the suggestions that we've mentioned here are very focused on conservation and greenhouse gas reductions. So for example, mass transit and, you know, shrinking commutes, and those all fall under those examples, which at least conservation is specific, you know, we know what that means. When we see proposals come by, we can, you know, we understand what that means. Greenhouse gas reductions, that's also, it's very specific, I mean, we know what that means. But climate change, I just, I don't know. I mean, if somebody brings up a policy or proposal, I don't, I mean, I can, we can comment on whether this will conserve resources or reduce emissions, but to comment on whether it will, what the broader impact is on the climate, on that is just very tricky.
Would it help if we had some language that had climate change reductions such as, and list a few things that, and then, not exclusive list, of course, but, you know, give some examples to folks as to what that would be?
Sure. And then that's almost like a glossary, right? That at least I feel like I can follow and keep up with.
Okay, right. Let me do a little bit of work on that. I think I've got something, but let me do a little bit of work on that, and I'll bring something back to you.
Okay. Another point that I had was just about splitting out the sections. So we had several of the sections here grouped greenhouse gas reductions in with air quality. And, you know, I believe they're both important, but I think it's organizational cleaner to have them in two separate sections, because I think they are two separate things.
Okay. So your thought would be on page, let me get there.
Yeah, I think I have a page number in my notes in here.
So on NE14, air quality and greenhouse gas, you think they should be separate?
Yeah, I'd like them to be separate. Let me flip to that page. I don't think that has a dramatic change on the content, but I think they are two separate things.
Right, right.
And particularly, the proposals can often pull us in two separate directions, because when we talk about air quality, I think about things like how much sulfur are we putting in the air, or things that make people sick, or cause cancer, or kill plants, or things like that. Whereas greenhouse gas reductions, it just pulls us, it's a different set of things pulling us in a different direction.
Mm-hmm. I think that's certainly doable.
And then on, I think it's NEP41.
Yep.
Which is on page NE16. So this, that's a great section, it lists a bunch of ideas in there. One, pardon me, one thing I just wanted to call out was making some comment about focusing on cost-effective approaches. You know, we were just talking about that the city does have limited resources. We looked at removing some of the codes here based off our limited resources. And so, you know, I think the best way that we can be good stewards of our environment is by pursuing the most effective approaches. And so something about most cost-effective, most effective, most accountable. And then one more comment was just about the specifics for the reduction level. The 50% of 1990 levels by 2050, does that account for population growth and economic growth, or is that an absolute number?
It's an absolute. One of the things I found interesting was that it's actually kind of based upon a state goal and target, and that has been basically put into the King County countywide planning policies, and that's what the state has identified, that they would like to see us attain.
What was our population in 1990? I know we've had a bunch of annexations and a lot of growth.
Well, in the city of Bothell, it was probably about 10,000 people.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
On that, so of the target of 2050, where are we now? I mean, because if we have better cars, I mean, where are we in the relationship now? I mean, if we've moved so far forward that we're asking for something that we can't get to without causing, I mean, is there, basically, do we know where we are now?
Over triple the population.
No, but I mean, is air quality, if we're trying to, if we're trying to reach, if we're trying to reach our 1990 levels now, where, I mean, where are we now on our 1990 levels? How far above those are we?
Well, I don't know the numbers. I, I mean, just with the population growth and the economic growth alone, it seems like a very daunting goal.
But the air quality in LA basin back 20 years ago is worse than it is today, because we've got cleaner cars and different things. So what I'm asking is, what does this mean? I don't know what this means.
Well, that's actually where the distinction between air quality and greenhouse gas emissions is really important.
Okay.
So like LA is a great example, you know, pollution was really bad in the 90s, but that was much more of like a sulfur dioxide problem, whereas the, so they really cleaned up their air quality, but that's totally orthogonal to the greenhouse gas emissions. So the challenge here is that greenhouse gas emissions are basically proportional to your population and economic activity.
I get you.
And so, you know, we can continue to grow and do things like reduce sulfur and reduce pollutants, but the more we grow, the more the population grows, the more the economy grows, which are all the directions we want to move in, that's going to drive up, naturally drive up our CO2 emissions. Now, we try to have better technology to improve it, but it's nowhere near enough. I mean, a Prius might be, what, twice as, you know, 50 miles to the gallon, and a regular car is 25. So that's a double, but when you look at just the amount of growth, that's not enough.
Yeah, and one of my issues was, I was trying to find that definitive number, because I know that was one of the things the commission had asked for. And one of the features I kept running across was that, yes, we're going to do a big study sometime, and we're going to come up with that. In fact, that's one of the, actually, the King County countywide planning policies is do kind of a regional, sub-regional kind of an effort to actually do that measurement type of a system. There's been some, I saw some information out, it looked almost read as it was mostly speculation as to where we were in 1990, but there are, as you identified, more air pollution quality standards. They've had that pretty well nailed down, but it's the greenhouse gas emissions that are much more challenging to define if I did.
Yeah, that's really tricky. I mean, when I look at the numbers there, I mean, I don't know if this is at all even close to possible, and so part of me is just nervous about, I mean, it's a nice goal to have, but it's, I mean, at least we should see, is this at all feasible to be at that? I mean, what would it take for us to be at those numbers?
Yes, and but unfortunately, it is a King County countywide planning policy, so we have to have that language, that reference in our document.
So if I could just ask a quick point of clarification, I don't know if you have this answer, Bruce, or not. So it's a statewide goal.
It is.
It's a King County planning area goal. It's a Snohomish County planning area goal?
No, Snohomish County does not have near the definition that the King County.
That King County does, but the state has laid out 50% of 1990 by 2050.
In their climate reduction, oh, shoot, I forgot, the initiative.
Right, so I understand. So I guess the question is, is if it's a statewide goal, is that, you know, are there going to be places in the state where it's greatly reduced, and we don't have to reduce all that way to achieve the state goal of 50% reduction? Or is it King County going to see a greater reduction on the waterfront, which would account for a lesser reduction in Bothell? Do we have that sort of understanding? Because I think I hear what Mike is saying, is if we're going to set that goal in our comprehensive plan, then we're going to have to implement policy and take action as a jurisdiction to, you know, quantify that. And how, at this point, I don't think we even have a plan. I know that there's some tools out there, and I know that the city's looked at carbon footprint, and they have shown a reduction in carbon footprint, and that's great. But, you know, it won't get done if it doesn't get measured, and we're setting a goal out there without an understanding of how we are going to then look at some code language or adopt a plan, or the city council is going to hire a consultant to come in and lay out a strategy that's then going to march on for the next, well, 35 years. And then we're going to be up here, or the folks that come after us are going to be up here, having to deal with specific code adjustments to be able to get to that. So I guess what, in a nutshell, what I'm trying to say is, is that without some type of specificity about what we're trying to achieve, and I know that we're obligated to do it, that's fine, but to be able to either understand whether this action that we're taking on the comp plan is the place to do it, or is there something else that we need to be taking on in the near term or understanding here shortly so that we can get on with, you know, the 35-year process? Does that help, Mike?
Yeah, yeah. I just, I can't even imagine what a city would look like. I mean, I'm an engineer, so I just naturally sort of jump to numbers and I start, you know, what would 50% reduction from 1990 levels be, particularly when the population's gone, you know, maybe it'll be 10 times larger at that point, and our economy, you know, if we keep up our good policies, will be a lot larger than, I can't even, you know, you had made a quick comment about the code loses credibility if it's stale, but it also loses credibility if it's unrealistically audacious.
Right. And I, well, I'm not going to speculate on that aspect, but what I will do is let me do a lot more digging. I actually do have a name of a person that, King County, who said they would give me some additional detail. But I think that we're going to have to face the fact that we don't have those good numbers yet. And in fact, one of the things that the King County wants to do is they want to create that type of an organization where they could actually do the testing and the measurement and all those kind of facilities in sometime in the future. So that's part of the issue as well.
Yeah, I mean, I do have one, I mean, I've seen these sort of goals before, and one of my concerns is that when cities set very unrealistic goals, it starts to push them to do things that weren't what they really wanted to do. So shutting down factories is an easy example. So, you know, I've seen cities or states that have these goals to reduce their emissions, and an easy way to do that is you just outsource all of your pollution. So you've got a factory, it's valuable to the community, it's an economic base, it's good jobs, but it also has a lot of emissions. So you shut down the factory, you move it to Mexico, and now you meet your emissions goals, but particularly, it goes to a country that has even worse environmental standards than us, so globally, the pollution actually gets worse. And so you set out with, we set out with this goal to improve, you know, the pollution, and we've actually get pushed into doing things that make it worse and backfire. So I guess I've said enough on this, I want to let the rest of the commissioners chime in with their observations and comments.
Blake?
Climate change, that's both a political term, I think, as well as an environmental term. And I want to make sure that we are talking about environmental, not political terms as well. Climate change has been going on for thousands and thousands and thousands of years. It's up, it's down, it's up, it's down. So I want to make sure that we're not shackling ourselves as a community and So I want to make sure that we're not shackling ourselves as a community and businesses by putting policies in place that affect climate change, or that allegedly affect climate change, that really will have no effect at all. In eighteen, you know, eighteen hundreds, there weren't too many SUVs driving around, and yet it was a lot warmer than it is today. So, I mean, I've got newspaper articles going back over a hundred years showing that there were cooling trends and warming trends and cooling trends and warming trends and cooling trends. I think it's extremely important to be, to use the resources that we have wisely and to protect the environment, but I just want to make sure that we're not shackling our economy and our citizens with policies that are not realistic. And I don't see anything in the policies that recognize the fact that climate change is both man-made and a natural occurrence. I'm not sure where to go with that, but...
Steve?
I have another question on something else, but not on that subject.
Well, it's your turn to comment on the whole, the whole kit and caboodle.
All right. So this is changing gears a bit, Bruce. Just, this is more structural maybe than anything, but you reworked goal number four. Thank you. I think I was the one who pushed back. It's on page NE seven. Pushed back on it as originally written. Just maybe help with the definition between a goal and a policy. Could that, is that fourth goal really necessary, or could it fit under the section of policies that begins on NE fourteen under air quality? Or is it really necessary for us to have that fourth goal there?
I added it because this seems to be a pretty important feature to the King County and Snohomish County countywide planning policies, and I wanted to have that goal, which is the broad vision statement. Okay, we would like to do this broad stuff, and then the policy would say, okay, to get to that, we'd like to do these other things. So as broad a statement as we can in a goal, and that's kind of why I thought maybe it would be important to have it as a goal, because it is becoming an important factor in this, well, basically, both the state and the counties are all identifying this is really critical to our continued work underneath our compliance of plans.
Okay. So the reason is just importance?
Yeah, that was a lot of it, yes. It's kind of a little, and it's also something that's a little bit new in this natural environment element. We really have not had that type of feature. We've had air pollution, but we've not had greenhouse gas emission and climate change kind of a concept before.
Okay.
Just with regard to the level of detail, I appreciate all the commissioners' comments. I think that one of the things that jumps out at me, or I think would be important to include, and I think we touched on this briefly last time, you had mentioned that there's a lot of places in the comprehensive plan, goals, and policies where particularly greenhouse gas reduction, conservation of natural resources, and improved air quality fit. They fit in the transportation element, they're going to fit in the urban densities of the land use code, they're going to fit in parks and recreation and open space and critical areas. I mean, there's a number of places that that happens. And I may have missed it, but it would be great if we're having a specific section around natural environment that's referencing air quality and greenhouse gases, it's a couple of different things, that it would be nice to have a policy in this section that says we will work proactively or coordinate across all of these other elements of the plan to ensure that the places where code and policy, or code in particularly is going to be affected or changed or modified. You know, we've got that in this section, so people read it, they get a direction to another place where they can see where things are actually going to be happening. And then just to follow up on Commissioner Stedman's comment, you know, climate change is a great thing, lots of debate on it, there's lots of good science out there. The things that we do around air quality, resource conservation, and greenhouse gas emissions are going to be the things that affect that. So I'd be really, you know, like Commissioner Stedman, very leery of how we are citing or including any reference to climate change in this section, noting that King County may have another opinion, but, you know, we're obligated to that. It's just for us, for me personally, it just seems a little too broad of a topic to be covering in specific goals and policies for the city. So, yeah, Patrick?
Sorry, one other quick comment I forgot to bring up earlier. NE eleven, on page NE eleven, the NE P fifteen, do we need to add Horse Creek? I mean, with the daylight of Horse Creek, does that turn into a fishery that we need to add into that section? Or are we fine as is with North Creek and the addition of Swamp Creek as you have it currently written?
The reason I didn't include Horse Creek in that one is because this was kind of like a regional kind of a point, and Horse Creek really is a Bothell-only creek versus the Swamp Creek goes from Snohomish County through Kenmore, through the city of Bothell. I mean, basically, that was kind of what my focus on that particular policy was.
So Bruce, it sounds like we'll be coming back again on this element.
I think so, yes. I think that'd be a good idea.
And looking at calendar for you?
I think I'm going to have to come back on the ninth of April.
April ninth?
Yes.
So with that, I'll ask for a motion to continue the public hearing on the review of the natural environment element and implementing critical areas regulations until April ninth.
Motion to continue the public hearing on the review of the natural environment element and critical areas regulation to April ninth.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Note that it passes unanimously with those present this evening. Moving on, there's no study session, no old business, no reports from staff?
I do have a report. It has to do with the 2015 periodic plan and code update. When you, when you finish with an element, or later on with a subarea plan, we're asking that you preliminarily recommend it, and then it's set aside and then brought back with all the other elements or subarea plans. But we want you to have that document that you preliminarily recommend, that especially if on the last night you make some final changes. For example, you made one change to the vision statement. So rather than you try to keep in your head for three or four months what it ended up looking like when you're all done with it, what we're going to do is, once you have preliminarily recommended an element or a subarea plan, we're going to provide them to you in the planning commission packet, not as an item for further discussion, but for your records. So in next week's packet, it'll actually appear under old business. So you'll receive the vision statement as you've preliminarily approved it, and the annexation element. So that will be our approach, so you'll have the document exactly as you have recommended it. So if you would, you know, I'm keeping them in a separate binder, you might want to do the same thing.
Thank you, Bill.
That's it.
Reports from members? I'd just like to bring to the attention of the members that within the next four to five weeks, we will be going through the selection of officers, something that we do every other year, and we're due for that. So everybody begin to think about that. I believe Gary Hassler was going to put a date in the April calendar when that comes out.
Has it been two years?
It's been two years since we went through a formal election. Now, there's been a lot of changes...
No, I...
Because of turnover, but, yeah. I talked with Gary a couple of weeks ago.
I didn't think it was two, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so he was checking and indicated that he would see that on the agenda. So with that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
We adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen.